Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and move aside.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the December the 11th meeting.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes from December 11th meeting.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes with the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Spack?
Standing.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the statement of bill paid in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we pay the statement of bills in the amount of three hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and thirteen cents.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the payment of the bill, statement of the bill paid with the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Spack?
Yes.
Next item will be comments or requests from the public. We're getting there, we'll move on to item number four. Would you please state your name and address?
Fred Brant, fourteen forty-nine South Ninety X Street. Fred Brant?
Correct.
Just had a question on the letter about the sewer service and water service against. If I'm on septic, am I not going to have to pay sewer?
That's correct.
How?
That's correct, keep up the heavy sewer.
All right, thank you.
We're trying to clarify, so we sent the letter out there and we changed.
Yeah, I remember seeing the letter.
And so that came up, so you know, I'm trying to get that word out there. So people that do not, that are on septic will not have any change as they are right now. They can get their water bill to BPU and then get their trash bill, we'll see that. They are on sewer, they will no longer see sewer on their bill after the next billing cycle. So the BPU's last cycle, your sewer actually is tomorrow, the bills go out the fifteenth, and so that should be the last bill they get if they're on sewer, that has the sewer charges.
I have a question on that.
Would you please come forward and state your name and address?
That was Dan Norris, fifteen twenty-one seven hundred fifty. Okay, I understand on septic, there's no sewer, but isn't there's no stormwater assessment against anyone out here?
We do not have stormwater.
We don't have stormwater?
What about drainage upkeep and ditch upkeep and is that just general?
Yeah, any drain, if we do any improvements right now, yeah, right now, we do not have a storm.
There's no storm assessment, okay. That was my question.
Never say never, but that's on the plate, so.
Thank you. Are there any others? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item number four, Consider Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero One, authorizing city to adopt the Windout County Emergency Operations Plan.
Mayor, councilmembers, for you, I'd like this, the Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero One, authorizing adoption of the Windout County Emergency Operations Plan. Over the last eighteen months, city staff has participated in the county plan development of Windout County Emergency Management. This is an ever-evolving process that occurs about five years. Strongly recommended to the Department of Homeland Security through the Federal Emergency Management Agency. What the county emergency operations plan does is provide an overall template for how it responds to, mitigate, prepare for, and function during emergencies, whether they're man-made or natural, such as a tornado or a terrorist victim. Part of the plan adoptions back in front of you because it has been five years since the last plan was approved in two thousand and twelve. If we do not adopt the ELC plan, we are under our FEMA ability to claim disaster assistance if this plan is not adopted in our area because we've not adopted in our home. It is easier for us to piggyback off of Windout County's emergency management plan that incorporates a vocal component of county and unified government coordinating the disaster response. So in other words, the plan is vital for if we were to have a large-scale tornado, we sit there and cede our mutual aid resources for either fire, EMS, police, or public works. We can sit there and start to immediately pull from the county, and if they are not available, we can pull from adjacent counties through the emergency operations center that would be activated during the plan. Also part of the plan has the mayor and city manager as representatives for the ELC if an event occurs and follows along with the UG. There is no cost for us to sign on to adopt this emergency operations plan, however, there is a consideration of disaster assistance reimbursement tied into the plan. The existing plan in two thousand and twelve allowed for bad disaster assistance planning, and two thousand and seventeen will be met on tomorrow, that we have some objective potential disaster revenue costs from thunderstorm events during this past summer. So we strongly recommend to our staff that we recommend, or that we adopt this resolution and continue to participate in the ELC, ELC planning process for the next five years out. Any questions?
Do we have a voice at that table when there's, you know, changes to this plan?
Yes, sir. Myself, police representative, Ms. Snyder, have all set through all the planning meetings throughout each one of the fifteen functional annexes that occurred.
So who's over Edwardsville in case of one of these disasters that you're, is it a...
The city manager is the primary responsibility for responding to and setting in the ELC as representative for the city of Edwardsville. Because it is assumed that as small a community as we are, myself, or the police chief, or the local department that is being pertained to the incident will be working in a few aspects.
So the plan, and we should probably, so it has these fifteen different annexes. So depending on what type of emergency it is, so, you know, if it's a train derailment, then the leak's going to go to fire. If it was, you know, some other type of thing, it may go to police. So if, we don't have full a separate management staff person, if that's all they do. So it's probably dependent upon the event and whether the ELC's even open. I mean, it could be a localized event that just impacts us, but yet it may still have the ability to have federal reimbursement. And we have, I mean, it is a challenge, but we have used it on a couple of occasions where we have gotten some partial reimbursement or cost. Technically, I think I believe the mayor is the official of every city, the way the president has said, the mayor is the official emergency management officer, but he or she can then delegate that to the local personnel.
So we're not surrendering sovereignty over any decisions?
No, sir, actually, actually, as we alluded there is a KSA, the mayor or his designated is the emergency government official during declared declaration of emergency if personally we had a tornado that affected a strong wind and a terror. My point of contact would be to contact city manager, who would contact the mayor saying we have an emergency declared that they have exceeded our resources, and one or two of us would be making the phone call to the emergency manager on duty, desk officer down at Windout County declaring our emergency, that we then sit there and start the process to put it in front of the governor's desk at the state agency. There is some training that is required for staff, we have follow-up ones, and them's training, for those that are pertinent to the ELC operations and dealer operations, particularly be it them's three hundred, four hundred, I believe for Mr. Webb and the mayor who are sitting in the ELC besides itself, the police chief and Ms. Snyder. The majority of staff has already had that training, we just need to go through this next year and ensure that some of the new staff we have on have the lower levels of training that there is.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero One.
Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero One, with the clerk please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Spack?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be Consider Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero Two, authorize the city manager in terms of lease purchase agreement for financing public safety equipment and technology.
Let me give an overview here and then, as necessary, we can have our two chiefs that are essential to the whole chief. During the budget time, we, on the fireside, knew that we needed to replace our monitors that are used, the cardiac monitors, basically, they were getting dated, and some of the technology for telemetry isn't available to those. So within the budget, we, in the sales tax, special sales tax fund, identified that as one of our expenses. As we, and so part of the money, the vast majority of the money is for that. The second piece has come into the area of public safety on the police side for storage, primarily of our video records that were required to maintain. As noted in the memo, right now, we aren't really able to beat those industry standards, that is, we like to be able to maintain all video for ninety days. There are certain videos that we cannot do that, and so we looked at the options of whether we use onsite device or cloud-based devices, and the preferred method was onsite because its lifecycle cost was, was less than using cloud on this particular situation. Again, technically, I think both the chiefs can address, you know, why we buy this whole monitor and this particular one, and also the EMS director here on the police side, why we would use this particular device over some other device. The financing mechanism for those, instead of doing these as separate items, we went to the banks and said, can you just package this all together? We've done that with vehicles in the past when we buy two police cars, a hog horse truck, a piece of equipment, because you get a little bit better interest rate, not significant better interest rate, you know, four or five, you know, point oh four or five or something like that difference, but it, it does help. So we went out to the two banks that we do business with, which is UBT, Union Bank and Trust, which is based out of Bonner, and Bank Midwest here locally, who is our, our depository bank. Both of them are held by larger bank companies and said, here's the proposal, give us your, your responses. In reality, they were both, and then, you know, very close, one was three point three three percent, the other was three point three four percent. So then you get into what the fees are, what the fee costs are, and on this particular case, UBT waived the setting up an escrow account. We generally pay using an escrow just because that way it doesn't, it are books and we have a lot of financial pieces to it. And so based on that, they were below overall cost, but in reality, they were within fifty dollars of each other, to be real honest with you. But, so, part of this is the decision to acquire these pieces, the other part is the financing, which is our recommendation to use UBT, which again, we've used both of these in the past, you know, do an excellent service for us, we would have no problem working with one of them, just in this particular case, they both are very competitive and UBT was slightly less than us.
So the one resolution covers both purchase and the finance?
I would say that the motion, that the resolution covers the finance, and the motion can include the purchase of and adoption of the resolution.
But I want to get cleared up.
Right.
So the motion would be the purchase and then the financial part?
Right. Basically, the motion's going to be to acquire three Zoll x-series cardiac monitors, one Dell EMC network storage device, and the rest of, and the adoption of Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero Two, within these purchases.
What's the lifecycle of the monitors?
Seven to eight years before the technology is no longer supported, and then your principal may another two and three beyond that of what you could buy or purchase off of their distribution, I suppose parts are completely eliminated.
I would note that, so, the monitors we had, wow, I, I believe two of them were new and one of them was used when we first started the service, but they weren't new technology, so they were toward the end of their life cycle as far as technology goes, but at that point in time, that's, you know, how we set up those. So we do maintain devices on our fire truck and both ambulances, so it prevents us from having to, you know, remember, did we put this in the, this truck later? We run a paramedic engine, so this is a critical, you know, component to being able to have the engine can literally operate separately from the ambulance, if you had two cardiac type calls simultaneously, they can still address it, obviously, you don't trade for something in a fire truck, but they can address the manual condition. Did I cover that right, Jim?
Chief, would these be linked, this is just for my information, would these be linked up with the, which hospitals would they be linked up with, and, you know, just kind of curious how that really works?
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but the technology is kind of similar how you email those. You can capture your twelve lead in the field, send it out there, and goes to a receiving station, will be distributed to the nearest hospitals, along with the ones that have the cardiac care stations, such as Providence does have a cardiac cath lab. So, you know, part of the transition would be, here you go, this is what we're seeing in the field, so what it does is allow a cardiologist to look at it, if you have an SD elevation, and which cath lab is closest and open at that time, you can put somebody on the table, do the cardiac cathization. The goal on the field is ninety minutes from time that we identify SD elevation in the field, so we have them in the cath lab. So it's kind of similar to the cloud, just sitting out there at the receiving station, and what it does is Zoll takes it, transfers that and add it into a air bite or a bit bite, or some sort of bite that flies out there, and then goes to the ERs, and then from there, they sit there and it's cardiologist, we're going to say, yep, this person needs cathization, here we got the data walking.
So it is linked up, I mean, that's, this is just for my own information, my own curiosity.
That way, we can sit there and have them to bad heart attacks of all heart attacks, we can identify with our guys in the field, confirm with the cardiologists, and if Providence has an opening in the table, and a special assistance, that's your role in the cath lab.
I want you to get it, but I don't want it to be for me.
Today, what they do is they, they would, they, the monitors can still do the monitor, they can print out the script, put it on the, basically, clipboard with the patient, and lessons change from, and, and they can take that in, I mean, they can say in the field, hey, this is what we're seeing, and then here's the data, but we can't send it electronically from the field now, is that right?
Right. Thank you.
Somewhere I remember my head.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen Dash Zero Two, which would authorize the acquisition of three Zoll cardiac monitors and a network storage device to be financed through Union Bank and Trust.
Second.
I have a question.
Answer my head.
So the thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars that's being paid out of the special tax, sales tax fund, does that, does that amount deplete it now, that we, are we using every penny out of it?
Yeah. I, I don't know, if we, I think approximately...
And my reason for asking this is if we have money in it, why would we borrow money and pay interest without, I mean, why wouldn't we just go and pay this off and be done with it and not pay interest on the money? It's, no, I'm...
No, it's a good point. So our ending, so right now, assuming the payments and with no other application, I think part of our thing is to have balance for future fire truck, large capital expenditures, and just not trying to deplete the cash. But it's...
What is the amount of interest that will be paid on the duration of this loan?
It's about, total interest for everything is about sixty-five hundred over the three years, so it's a three-year payment cycle. It's mainly a cash management, as, as much as anything, I mean, it's, we've had this discussion even at the audit levels a couple of times, and I've said, well, at what point do you pay cash versus borrow money? You know, right now, we're estimating when we adopted the budget with this purchase, you, having an ending balance of about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
So we could pay for it outright?
We could pay for it outright, it is a possibility. Now, I will say this, the lease doesn't prevent us from early pay, and there's no penalty for early pay. So twelve months from now, let's say, or even when we get to first payment cycle, which is July, so the first payment is July fifteenth, we could pay the full amount plus whatever that interest is for that six-month period and pay it off. So that, do you have that option at any time?
Well, I think what'll happen is, I think a lot of people say that when they go and get loans, oh, I paid off early, they never do, they just like, because they get used to their two-hundred-dollar a month payment, and they just go, well, I paid off early, I was paying my two-hundred. Now, I mean, so the question is, if, you know, three years is sixty-five hundred dollars, saving sixty-five hundred dollars, I mean, if, if that would leave us a balance, I mean, I'm just throwing numbers out, around forty thousand dollars, is that correct? In the special?
Well, the, the purchase price was ninety-eight thousand roughly for the three years, I mean, the principal amount. So we wouldn't pay, so the, the storage device cannot be paid for out of the special sales tax, which was now, there's no allocation for police.
And I got, that's my next question on that also.
But, so you got about ninety-eight thousand is the cash paid for, for that item. We don't have the cash.
Roughly leaves us on ninety, ninety thousand, and in that fund, special tax.
That would be, we would estimate.
Also, the, if we just, when we went out for the proposal, we also, so that would be, we did it individually, and we did, did, so we purchased the EMS cardiac monitors by themselves, and just went with the lease purchase for them, now we're charged by current charges as well. So that, that sixty-five hundred savings is, it'll be smaller than that, I don't have a map right in front of me, but it's not, it's not exactly what we see.
I mean, sixty-five hundred for the full, but you're, but you're right, I mean, it is the question of, do you pay cash or do you use a financing tool? Part of the question is, when we go, I mean, we know that in the next couple of years, we're going to have probably at least one large capital purchase in the fire department at some point from a fire truck replacement over the next couple of years, and/or, we know, probably an ambulance, now, currently, the ambulances are paid out of the general fund, it'll be a decision at that point if we want to pay for it out there, but...
So my next question is on this storage, how are, I mean, I was always under the impression that the storage of the cloud, which is free or nearly free, I don't know if that, sorry, I was throwing that out there, I don't have a big idea, but, why this method versus, and, and what have we, what are other cities doing that would lead us to think that this is the direction that we needed to go to spin?
I'm going to turn that one over to the chief, because he, he did the research on this, is why item A or B, so...
And what was that total cost for the, the storage?
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Okay.
So if I understood the question, what's the difference, why the decision for the network attached storage device rather than the cloud? And the cloud for us is not free, it's in excess of probably twenty-one thousand dollars. What you have to understand is, number one, the security associated with the cloud, and number two, that the, it has to be compatible, but the direction that we choose to store the information has to be compatible with the vendor. And there are a number of options, but the vendor has their own storage capacity, which they buy from, say, Google, Amazon, or somewhere else, and then they pass on the cost. And it's really about gigabyte, terabyte storage, the level that you store it, the more the cost. There was some in the past when this first emerged, is that the money from these companies is going to be made, not necessarily in the sale of the devices, but more in that, that kind of storage. And what's happened for us, we have to start from the beginning for us, is that we, we pursued grant funding for most of our technology infrastructure. The infrastructure the city has today, we started ten years ago, and every year, tried to add some technology enhancement through grant funding, and we've done quite a bit in that, through that capacity. Essentially, in two thousand and fifteen, we added the HD capacity video devices for the officers. We've always had in-car cameras, and of course, you know, we had the body cameras some, some years ago, but what we've moved to is something more intuitive in the body cameras, that they interact with our in-car video, okay? And so we pursued that, that's in HD quality, about seven-twenty, it varies, just depending on, on the environment, but essentially, HD quality stuff, of course, takes up more space. In addition to that, those purchases, we also purchased the server system that now the entire city uses. So in, in addition to all the video that we manage on that one server, which we had two servers in the past, and we consolidated to one virtual server, okay, it runs several servers inside the one appliance, if you will. So we have our video management software runs from that one server, and it stores all of our capacity. And that is where we have all the problem, is we added the, we add the fire department to the city network, and the entire network, every, every piece of the city runs through one server appliance, which is a virtual machine. So not to get overly technical about the network, but that's our network, and most of that equipment was grant funded over the last ten years to get to where we are today. So what has happened is, we produce so much HD video that the server has run out of its capacity. So the next thing was to explore options, and, I'll back up just a minute, that capacity was not due for another twelve-plus months. So it, when we added the city and then attached the fire department to the network, it just started building layers upon layers, and our financial data is the second largest piece of data that we have on that server, aside from the video, okay, so, because that's the way that's, that whole program has several modules, it's a lot of data from, it's stored as well. So it's a very large program, and it's also on that same virtual machine. So what's happened is we've layered this thing up and it's full, so then, we needed an immediate solution because it started interrupting our ability to function, it's, it put the server down, so the entire city was offline, we couldn't use the financials and those sorts of things. So we had to make some provisions, such as expanding the servers to its full capacity, which was another four terabytes, and that's all we have, and we have about twelve percent of that left, and that was two months ago. So we, we just have so much data from all avenues of the city. Now, back to the original question, why this over that? We worked in partnership with our vendors in a number of ways, we have a third-party vendor for our network that, that services all of our computers and things like that, net standard, and they have some very high-level engineers. We also work with our vendor for our video software, and they do offer that as one of their services, to store stuff on the cloud through their, their video server and some, some of these other things. It really became lifecycle expensive, and it varies, if we produce more video, that cost increases, so it's not set in stone. And as the market demands, they could raise their prices. So essentially, that was one component we looked at, the other component was, what I proposed today, was looking at the Dell EMC product, and this Isalon product, it was highly recommended, it's been researched for law enforcement video, and it's very compatible, they've done an entire study, and it's, and they specifically can work and, and compatible with our vendor for our video software and our hardware. So essentially, what it comes down to is, we go back to the cash, cash management, it's not a, a full out forty-three thousand dollars today, the fifteen thousand dollars gives us some room, we won't be paying twenty-one thousand plus, if you will, for our data throughout the years, and, and every, I think there's a thirty-six-month contract that we have to commit to. It also doesn't, it really doesn't give us the control over what happens with, where it is, where it's stored, and that sort of thing. We have the opportunity, if we have the other appliance, the, the Dell EMC, we can move the video of software and the storage capacity, all this data off of our server. If, if we use the cloud component, we still have to have some mechanisms and some temporary cash storage on the server to then transfer to the cloud, that's the way it has to work. So the appliance gives us the opportunity to move it all off of there and just use it for one thing, and that's video evidence. So we have this large capacity, it's crashing our server, for lack of better terms, and we have the opportunity now to not pay as much, we don't know what the variable cost with the cloud will be, it's compatible with our, our video management software, and it really gives us an opportunity to separate the entire service that way. And so my recommendation, we decided to go this way, we pursued the grant, there was for, at the state level, once again, of, of ten submissions, we've been denied twice, and this was one of those, it's not a priority funding product, and there was one point two million dollars available with over three million in requests, so non-priority, we didn't make that, we didn't make that cut for this time. Otherwise, we would have been projected to have this in the, in the budget and be paying for it that way. But I think this is the best way to go, we get the local control, we have the storage capacity, we move everything off of our server, and it doesn't kind of conflict or interfere with the operations that we already have with the city side of things, if you will. So that's really what we looked at, we thought it was the most cost-effective option. What it also offers is that at some... What it also offers is that at some point, we can then expand extensively for less cost than we would pay the one-time fee to the cloud, and it also offers us an opportunity that we can then send data to a cloud for just individual storage, such as you have a lifetime, uh, uh, requirement for retention, homicide, if you will, something very drastic. We can take that piece of that video and then have an opportunity to, to send it to that cloud where it's not taking up the capacity on the server out of later date, so we can expand into that, uh, cloud environment when we're ready to do so, at a much lesser, lesser cost, simply because we are not putting out there sixteen terabytes of data in a year, because we have a lot of data, it's, it's huge.
I thought that one of the concerns was, uh, on the cloud was the security of the cloud-based storage, so now we're saying that we would put a homicide on something that we had issues with, uh.
Yeah, we would, uh, so, it, it's, and again, I'm not an expert in the cloud environment by any means, but from what I understand, we get the security through the, the cloud environment, our vendor, who would then, of course, pass the cost on to us, so for example, and that's done by volume. So, there, there is, there are certainly industry standards that would have to be met and that sort of thing, but there would be a time that we have opportunity to research that and make sure these one or two, or ten things, or a year's worth, at some point, we might be able to, uh, to put it there, and it would be secure and pass industry standards and things like that. That's somewhat later down the road, because we will have capacity up to a petabyte, which is absolutely huge, uh, that we can, that's five to, five to seven years easily before we have to consider that. So, really, we capture, uh, the forty-three thousand over the three-year period, and then, then it's, it's really owned and operated by us, and we're not having that reoccurring twenty thousand-plus-ish that may vary after, after that three-year period.
You said you, we have, uh, about twelve percent capacity left in the server?
Yeah, somewhere in there, it varies from day to day.
Right. How, how much will this free up?
Uh, about sixteen terabytes.
Which is how long, uh, how long will we need to, will this, how much time will this buy us before we need to worry about our, our server?
Yeah, I would say, well, uh, on a server, that, that has a capacity of, uh, another four or so twenty terabytes. So, once we bring the video capa, the piece of it off of that server, we open up, it's, that's, that's a long time to fill up another, uh, you know, ten to fourteen terabytes, just depends on.
On this year?
Oh, that's years, yeah, three, four years it are, uh, before, before we may have to start looking at, uh, the storage piece of it. Now, of course, all of this stuff changes year to year, the advances of, you know, they don't, uh, you know, XP is no longer supported, all these things, we have a, we have a virtual machine, a two thousand eight server, inside the server that's outdated, so we have to then update to a twenty-twelve R, but we've had that two thousand eight, uh, between two thousand eight oh nine, we've had it that long, and, but it's, it, those are things that are getting outdated and not serviced anymore. So, sometimes the lifecycle of the product itself and its service, but I would say the answer is, we would get five years easily, uh, out of the server, and that's with the capacity. But that doesn't mean necessarily the, uh, that it holds up, you know, moving parts, that sort of good stuff, you know, but it's well-maintained, and it's, it was a quality, uh, very high-end product when we purchased it.
How long have we been running at this twelve percent capacity?
Well, um, we've been to zero, and which is not good on the operating system, so, um, the last two months, we, uh, were back to that, maybe that twelve percent-ish, fifteen to twelve percent left, which makes, that could be nearly a terabyte, just depends, but one terabyte, we could, we could eat that up in a minute.
So, would it, my question is, we're having this study done that talks about facilities and, and locations, and, um, what happens if we end up with a substation at, or how does that, uh, affect, I know that if you're on the cloud, that doesn't affect it, like, because you're on the cloud. So, I'm, I'm thinking, like, just like we just spent twenty-five thousand dollars to have the study done, to tell us that we need to be thinking five years down the road, ten years down the road. So, with that being said, I mean, should we not wait until we hear back on this study to find out facilities, and I'm not talking, the fire department side, but I'm talking about on, on, on this right here? If we're operating right now and, and we're making it, do we need to spend twenty thousand dollars today?
So, I, I think a couple of points, and I, so if I, if I'm understanding right, that our cost if we mix a cloud is twenty-one thousand roughly annually?
Yeah, those are annual. I'm not saying right now, I'm saying we're, we're operating right now at twelve percent, and we're, and we're making it.
But we're not capturing all of our police department video that we should be capturing?
What's happened is, we need to move to, we have a, a retention matrix, uh, which is well-aligned, the problem is, it, it, uh, we need to move it to a ninety-day as a minimum for all video, and you have to understand how it's labeled on the, on the end user and all this other stuff that goes along with the process of capturing and retaining and storing the data, but in, in a sense, what we need to do because of just, uh, industry alignment and recommendations, is we need to retain all of our video at a minimum ninety days. So, we need to extend our, uh, management and storage of that video in order to ensure that we have time to, uh, you know, review it, make sure it's labeled correctly, I'll give you an example, every day, several times a day, the video is tested. That tested video then is captured and, and stored on the server, and it's labeled for retention as an equipment check label. Well, that equipment check label is done by an officer, who, who then maybe scrolled down too far, it needs to be double-checked or whatever, now maybe a criminal case gets labeled accidentally by that first box that could be checked, and it's, but it's gonna disappear in twenty-four hours. We saw that as a, as an error that just is, you know, you're, you're just doing the same thing over and over, and you kind of just missed that box or whatever, it's subject to human error. What happens is, that stuff disappears permanently. And if you can understand, maybe your criminal case is fairly important to you and to us as well, and we don't have, wanna have to explain where our video went, why we lost it or something like that, and, and even though there's an audit trail and stuff you can't recover. And so, what we need to do is, in order to have the time to review the videos, to make sure they're labeled correctly and all that, we need to store them at the ninety-day minimum. And then, of course, there's a number of videos that have to be stored forever, and we still have to have access to them, uh, throughout a year, two years, whatever, it took, uh, last homicide we had, it took about, almost two years, uh, before we came to some resolve in, in that issue, so, so that needs to be then retained probably its lifetime for any appeals and all the other stuff that goes with it, that's a massive amount of data, it's, so that, reference to the twelve such percent, that, that's a month or less. And then we're back to, we have no way to expand the capacity, uh, we have no other place to go, and then the entire city is subject to this kind of disruption of service until we can rectify the situation.
Chief, a question for you. Will this, will next year's, uh, payment be in the budget, in the, in the regular budget?
Yes.
Okay, this year, you're saying that, do you believe you, that the department, I think it says departments, uh, or is this one department?
Yeah.
The police department making budgetary adjustments so that the roughly...
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, twenty thousand is absorbed into this year's budget without really increasing expenditures or spending?
Correct, yeah, yes, sir.
And then next year will be in the budget that we see, or just somewhere in the schedule?
I, I, the other thing, as I say, relative to the physical device and the computers and things, regardless of what we do, facilities, they're gonna get incorporated and moved in, so, even if we had a, a remote side, it's probably not gonna be where the, the server is based out of. I mean, today, we base the service, it's based out of, it, it's actually kind of an odd situation, the physical devices in the police department, but the way the wiring goes, it, it, it comes here, so, some of our stuff comes in here and it has to go there and vice versa, so, obviously, that'd be somewhat of a plan. The other thing is, I know we talked a lot about police video and, and their needs, but as financial documents, court documents, just admin-type of documents, keep building out, you know, Word files are fairly small, we could probably delete every Word file on the computer and, and from what I understand, I'm certainly not an expert, it doesn't make much impact, but even on court documents, so, so, court documents are all paper, now they're almost all electronic, and they too have potential video, because they've gotta go with the case file and pictures and things like that, so, while the, the biggest user or, or, you know, the one that's drawing you down is, is video, because video just uses more data anyways, and that happens to be in the police department, it's really more of a, a system-wide impact, and I think that's what we're, and then again, from a cost standpoint, you know, yeah, we could do the cloud, but if you're spending twenty thousand a year even, you're, you're from just a pure dollar standpoint ahead of the game. Now, you know, for security and all those things, we have part of the reason we use NetStandard, they help us do a lot of, you know, they are managing, manage our IT, we don't actually have managed IT, it's something we've talked about, we don't have an IT person on staff, the chief kind of gets to double as that person, he's our guy, and.
For ten years.
Yeah, yeah, uh, so.
The way I understand it, then, if it's twenty-one thousand dollars a year, we basically were saving a year over, you know, just being a three-year lease, we're saving at least one year of that twenty-one thousand dollars, correct? We're paying forty-three thousand for the storage unit, we'd be paying sixty-three thousand for three years of cloud storage, and then if we get three more years out of the equipment, we saved another sixty-one thousand dollars. So, so this would be the most economical approach then at that point in time.
Yes.
The twenty-one thousand was an annual, every year twenty-one thousand cost? I thought it was a one-time cost, so whatever.
No, these are, there's a three-year contract, and those are annual fees from what we have, twenty-one thousand every year. Again, that's proprietary to the vendor, specifically, so there may be other options, I just don't know what they are.
And just to confirm, our situation right now is not acceptable for industry standards, we're already losing video.
Yes, ma'am, it's not acceptable, that's correct. Though our current matrix is not wrong, it's just the, you know, Department of Justice, those Institute of Technology, those kinds of things recommend a ninety-day period, it gives, gives opportunity to review and, and just manage the data, because there's so much, it's hard for one person, or even the officer generated, to go back and look at everything they've ever done, so.
So, we just, we don't have time to wait a year or something like that, we're already behind the.
That's correct, and, and that's why we got ahead of the game, and we, we did the research much earlier than, of course, today, we waited for the grant cycle, made the application to the, for the grant, and then we were denied, and that takes a little while, uh, mid to late October, uh, and then we waited for the year change to go ahead and make the presentation. We did expand the server in the last two months to make sure, to see if that would help, but it just, it just really hasn't helped, it's somewhat critical.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, question had been called, motion to approve the lease purchase?
Adam.
Is it quick?
Just said he gave it to the question in a second.
And, uh, to finance, would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Study?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
And we will, I mean, you, you make a very good point, Mr. Stein, and so, we will look at that on the, on the cash basis, I mean, whether or not, as we move forward, whether this item or potentially others, we wanna look at that. One of the things I wanna do is, so our sales tax fund is about, we're about in year four of that, I think, now, three or four, and so, you know, the biggest purchase we have is the fire truck that we bought, and that had, I think, seven years of payments. Uh, most of the other things have been relatively short-term, one to three years, but the big items we know coming in, you know, the biggest items from just a pure equipment are gonna be fire truck ambulances, we know that, you know, we know that we take the items, and so, one of my concerns has been, you know, hopefully, that sales tax fund, we've justified that it's been a good, a good fund going forward, I mean, we've done roads, and we've done parks, and we've done fire, but it still requires a vote to renew it, and we don't wanna get out there where we have a bunch of things financed eight, ten years past the expiration date of the sales tax fund, so, and that is one of the things we wanna make sure we watch it, we, when we're in using these funds.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be, let's consider authorizing the city manager to approve change order number one for the two thousand seventeen street maintenance project.
Well, I will address this, and, and Ms. Snyder's here, she could probably, uh, do this. This is a little bit new, uh, this is something that Ms. Snyder brought to us, I think it is the way we should be doing it, uh, which is basically what you're seeing is, when we went out to bid on our street maintenance project, the council authorized a sum of the hundred and fifty-seven thousand, forty-six and, and ninety cents. And like any of these projects, there are change orders come along, and sometimes these are gonna be higher, and sometimes they're gonna be lower in, in the overall process. And so, what we've done here is to show what those projects were, what we overran in some areas, underran in other areas, with the total at the, at the bottom line is, that in our particular case for this program, we saved about fifty-four hundred dollars over what we anticipated spent. And we'll have others that will be over, because change orders occur during the project, and so typically, the engineer, you know, the contractor will say, hey, we didn't know we were gonna run into this, or we have to add additional curbs or, or something, the engineer will review it, say, yes, this is appropriate, especially when we already have a line item, so we already have a unit cost, but we just had to buy more asphalt or curb or something. Other times, we run into a problem like we did, uh, up on, uh, hundred and, is that hundred and fourth and Edge Hill?
Second.
Hundred and second and Edge Hill, where we had a lot of water, a lot of subbase, and we couldn't just not fix it, so you fix it, it's a change order, we got pricing, engineer reviews it, I sign off on it, and, and we move forward. But this is an opportunity to kind of bring it back to the council, kind of full transparency so you can see this, and literally authorize that final change order, or change order, but in a single document. We've now completed twenty-seventeen, it's done, and this is the cost that's allocated to you. We'll be happy to answer questions about any pieces of the project, uh. So, we're just asking that you authorize for me to go ahead and, we're just signing change order number one and close out this project.
We're just authorizing that we're closing out the project?
Right. You're authorizing a change order in the name of.
I don't know, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna bring you one at some point in the future, as much as we try not to, that will be the other direction, but, uh, we, we try to hold those, we try to hold those.
That'll be in our study this way.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take a motion to authorize the city manager to approve and sign this change order number one for the two thousand seventeen street maintenance project.
Okay. No, no, she got you covered. It has been moved in seconds to authorize the, um, approval of the change order number one for two thousand seventeen street maintenance project, would the clerk please call roll?
Adams, Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Study? Yes.
How long do we need for this?
Uh, I think, uh.
Yeah, James, pretty sure.
I think probably till eight, ten is gonna be appropriate, I was hoping, I, I think we'll spend more time than, if you wanna do it last week, you can do last, but I think you need at least fifteen minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to recess in the executive session, um, pursuant to KSAT.
Eight oh five.
Pardon?
Eight oh five.
KSAT forty-three nineteen B two for a consultation with city attorney regarding information over Dean Britleys and the attorney-client relationship, and pursuant to KSAT seventy-five forty-three nineteen B six relating to the acquisition of real property for municipal purposes, with the opening needing to resume in the city council chambers at eight oh five.
And you didn't say recess, correct? Yes.
Yes. Okay, recess.
It has been moved in seconds to recess in the executive session, we turn at eight oh five, would the clerk please call roll?
Adams, Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Study? Yes.
Then motion in second to return to regular session, would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Study? Yes.
And there is no action necessary, okay? So, we'll move right into reports.
Uh, it is, uh, National Football League night, so, uh, the only thing I have is four. It is National Football League night, so the only thing I have is we will expect that we will have another workshop prior to our next meeting, I think I told you before, mainly to do some just general count like liability, training, coma core, just as a group, partially with Ms. Kahr coming on, and it'd be a good training there, and it's a good refresher for all of us. So that's really, right now, we see the focus of that. We'll probably have a number of action items, just kind of catching up from last year's stuff now as we get to the beginning, so we'll, we'll move forward with that. There's just some administrative functions that have to be taken care of in the first year, so that's at this point all I have, unless you get questions coming.
Chief, nothing, thank you. Chief Winters?
One small thing, since everybody has enquired what the family crew of charity did this year for the community, I'll be happy to add a couple slides into the slide.
Oh, okay. That was back at the brain, I was like trying to figure out all the brain.
Other way, other way. You're going forward now.
You're ruining the whole thing.
That's what you had. Well, police officers and firefighters that were through this year had a pretty, pretty substantial year. The family, the family Christmas, the fire start, Christmas charity, they expanded on it this year, we bought 60-some backpacks for the community school up here, and we're still a little bit interested in coming through students participating in our, in Harvey relief where the charity did buy some items towards the donations that occurred in the community. You can go to the next slide there. Did the first motorcycle run that we had this year, that brought in a little over $2,000 next slide. That day, did cooperate with the stat day, the same with the golf scramble on the next slide, which occurred on a day that was 72 before and was 40 at tee time.
Where are we at?
We were at home. It wasn't great for weather, but again, the golf scramble pulled in over almost $2,000 that was done. Total this year was $6,424.54. We started out with the idea to take care of 10 families, next slide Zach, we ended up preparing for 16 families in need at Christmas. We did not stop until about three days before Christmas actually hit.
Are those all Edwardsville families?
All Edwardsville families. I can tell you where the majority of them live, but if you want that information, I'll give it to you on the side. Ended up having the biggest shopping trip in Barnard Springs, and the most multiple shopping trips in Barnard Springs. Walmart, had the Christmas breakfast morning at Earth, which is on the next slide. We did have to move out the air trailer to make room in the fire station for all the items. Should be, some more of our support help we have between Kiwanis and the middle school, Kiwanis Club, helped that Saturday morning, beat 16 families, 19 girls, 16 adults, 21 adults. Give you an idea of perspective of what $6,400 buys, 224 pounds of turkey, 84 pounds of ham, 160 pounds of hamburger, 80 pounds of rice, 80 pounds of beans, 160 pounds of potatoes, 80 pounds pancake mix, 80 pounds of cereal, 32 pounds of stuffing mix, 48 pounds of pasta noodles, 36 pounds of peanut butter, 960 cans of canned vegetables, 150 cans of soup. Bought 112 shirts, 85 pants, 35 coats, 35 mittens and hats, 35 pairs of shoes, 160 pairs of socks, and 80 pairs of underwear, not crewed boys. So that is what police and firefighters did in the last best of year preparing the cruiser. So that's all I've got.
Good job, thank you. Chief really appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Snyder? Anything in public work?
Nothing.
Okay.
They've been out early in mornings. I would say that.
That's a fair day, isn't it?
Thankfully, we haven't had snow, they've been out very early.
Carolyn, we usually do comments and just for that, your new, no, what, you start first? Because I don't want to hear any of it while it's already been said. You're first.
I'm all just, I'm really excited to be here and serve our community, also just to be a part of the community where the police and fire take it upon themselves to do so much. It's not just other people sending those resources to you, they get enough there and getting your shoes on the street and doing it yourselves is a really big asset to Edwardsville, and I don't, I know most communities don't have that, so that sets Edwardsville apart, and that's a great thing.
Here. I have a statement that I just want to read, and it just, it's a concern of mine, and hopefully it's a concern of the whole community and whole county. It concerns the water slide at Sliderron. And personally, as a citizen of Windock County and Edwardsville, I requested some attempt be made to have that water slide at Sliderron torn down. I've been told there are still ongoing investigations into the liability issues through courts, insurance, or whatever. Regardless of this process, I think it's a horrible reminder of a tragic loss of life that we are reminded of anytime we travel through western Windock County in the area of Village West and Village South at Edwardsville, where this monstrosity is visible, not to mention the national media exposure when covering functions at the Speedway and the tourists who visit our county. To me, this process has taken too long to finish and needs to be a priority for our county, Kansas City, Kansas, and the state of Kansas. I think we as state's paying citizens of this county and state deserve that this ice work be destroyed as soon as possible. This is my opinion, but I don't think very many people would disagree with me on this. Thank you for that.
Chief, thank you for all your work, you gentlemen, to last several years, I know the police department, fire department, all your support, all your helpers. I know, I think you drove a lot of items down to Texas, didn't you?
Sure.
You forgot to mention that. You probably forget to mention a lot of you do. Thank you so much for always going above and beyond, and all your tremendous people that help you, people that donate, all the behind-the-scenes, thank you so much. And Carolyn, welcome, welcome to the podium.
I don't forget, welcome to the group, the council. Trash on 435, I had called and spoke to you, Mike, a couple weeks ago. My dad and I were coming back from out of town, we were on 435 heading north, and we crossed over the river and immediately noticed when we get Windock County. And, and I was ashamed when I pulled it, when we kept driving and we just kept looking in our, in our medians and off to the side, and there was just trash everywhere. I personally made a call to death involved, as, as an Edwardsville resident. They act like they had no idea what I was talking about, they kept wanting to know what truck that it fell off of, and I said probably all of them. And they asked me if, that if I saw it fall off of an actual waste management truck, because they contract with several other trash companies, and it could be their responsibility. So clearly, an attempt to shirk their duties of picking trash up. If you drive out of here or drive tomorrow, you will notice immediately when you drop, cross over into, you know, where the police sit there in the little cutout south of Holiday Drive. And then right there's where all the trash is picked up and there's, I have seen those guys, their little pickup truck with two or three people picked up here one time, once. And we were assured as a council that they would make that an attempt, and make that a priority when we were negotiating trash pickup, that they would make efforts. Now, I want, I would like for them to have to, somebody has to know when those guys are working and when they're not. The guy I talked to acted like it was, well, they just get sent out and we don't really have control over where to go. Well, I, I don't believe that, because they're clearly not getting our area, and our area looks terrible. So I don't know if you got anywhere or not.
I have not, but I will say that I, I did reach out to them, I did ask for support for at least a 12-month period, same, what days, what times. Also reached out to the state, to Leroy, who's the regional manager. And thus far, I'd say I've not gotten a very satisfactory response, but it's, we're still on it, but I mean, but you're right. And I will say, I drove that particular day, we spoke, and I don't remember, I think I was sal, maybe it was the next day. I did see a crew, I think it was either today or Friday, we were riding the bridge, but that's the first time I've seen, seen them out here. I mean, I do see scratch, I don't think periodically, I would assume it's done on a regular basis, but sporadic.
Well, I don't know what we can do as a city to address the state level, I'm, I understand we're...
Well, I, I would, here's what I would suggest, I mean, I will reach out again there, but potentially it might be appropriate if we even just send one there to state reps, represent us, and ask them if they can help there being an army act.
Well, what I will do is invite both of our commissioners for this area to attend our next city council meeting, and if we could voice our concerns to them, if that's okay.
Only that's a doubt, that's a...
But I, you know what, we need some answers. I'm tired of talking about trash, we're always talking about trash. And, and it's, I mean, it's embarrassing, we talk about the gateway to our city, I don't care if you're on 435, K32, or first, whatever street you're on, I mean, it looks terrible. I mean, and it's just not getting any better, it's getting worse. They mow over it, it turns one piece into 10,000 pieces, I don't understand it, nobody's getting off there to pick up the trash. Secondly, I had talked about a community service aspect where the city, where we do something, and I brought that up over several council meetings ago, and I'd like to know if we got anywhere on that.
Well, I did, I, a couple of follow-ups, and I, maybe Zach, and I did speak to the sheriff about whether they were using work crews, they were not, I was very limited. He did talk a little bit, and he was going to follow up, and I need to get back with you.
It's not the sheriff that does it.
Well, no, I, what, they do some project under the sheriff's office, but then under the KCK, he was going to follow up with them. We've also spoken internally with the court about when do we do, you know, do we have people that do community serving? I think the biggest, the biggest challenge is managing that, but I understand, again, I spoke to the sheriff, and he gave me some connections that was right at Christmas, New Year's time. I guess it's through the Kansas City Crime Commission, but they have an organization under there that kind of manages paperwork. So if I'm given, you know, if the Edwardsville court gives me community service, they have the resources and documents to say, yes, they came to, here's where you can go do community service, Edwardsville's a place, and then I, probably the hardest part is just going to be figuring out, so when a person comes to do community service, somebody can be there, sign off, you know, so, you know, there's, there's a cost and...
Well, we already have officers working.
Right. Well, I don't know if they're going to be able to stand out there and watch something.
Why? We have them standing in here. I don't think that's the best reason. That's personally what I feel. Well, I want to see the trash picked up in the city. There's a, there's a program in place where that happens. I was involved in that program, and, and I would like to continue looking, and we can discuss whether it's a good use of the, those personnel or not later.
But, so we have been, I mean, I don't have all your agents, but, but, but it may, you know, someone requires...
Pushing it off, and pushing it off, and pushing it off, and we're just going to get more trash, and more trash, and more trash, and it's never going to get addressed.
I would agree with bad things looking on the highway, no doubt about it. Is there any kind of a move towards fire departments doing video, unsite video stuff as well, like the police officers do?
Yes, sir. There are some agencies starting to do body cams on EMS calls as well, and home cams on fire service calls. We have just started looking at potentially trying to fund that, 19 or other priorities that I had straightened up within the firehouse before we went that route, but it's... Our obligation to track and video with HIPAA and everything else would also cause other additional security concerns, so before we even sit there and start a project and look at that, we're still trying to sit there and gather what the Kansas UMS legislative laws will allow on that type of reporting, and then also on how they develop it. So we're still probably 16 to 18 months out before we even start hoping to incorporate something like that.
I assume from a liability standpoint that that would be another, the next step?
Yes, sir. There are cameras being used on a lot of services, recording the front for really vehicles for traffic exclusion purposes. There are services that are recording the back patient apartments due to training and other aspects of it. You're talking about your re-changing of design, features of animals, that we would have to sit there and expect that it'd be more cost-effective to do it on a new animal's purchase and launch it from that point than trying to retrofit everything back out.
I just wondered if the industry was moving that way?
Yes, sir, it is. Not as, not as quick as police officers want to, because of the, the nature of type of jobs, but there are places that are starting to pick it up.
I think we had looked at one point, been some time back, about, you know, maybe reuse of some cameras on, or vehicles just for, it's more than anything, just for a liability, so in case you're involved in an accident, but you're seeing that in personal vehicles even more now, where people have, you know, because the cost has come down, so in our case, it's the, it's the privacy issues more so, you know, if it's in your personal car, you know, keep the video, you know, no issue. If you put it in a city vehicle, they'll keep the video as an issue, you know, so some of that, but, but I think there is more push.
We just gave some of our leftover, our original, what we call scorpions, body worn cameras, we just beat the heck, but we had a couple of them that still works with you, and maybe do some test runs with it, see how it worked, see what they would like. It's data technology, but it's, but at least I can pass with it, so.
Play your own little...
Yeah.
That's what I could...
I have additional whenever you may, or if you have the last one.
Yes, that's...
I have, I actually have a real concern when the trash and that we're not concerned about that, and we're worried about the way that manpower is delegated, is the program that I went through, SEPTED evaluations and SEPTED program with crime prevention through environmental design, and one of those things is trash, and how your city is perceived by trash. The broken window theory, that if the person has the window broken on your block, and then eventually you kind of start thinking, well, they don't have to fix their window, I don't have to pick up my, I don't have to fix my window, and then it just spreads like a disease. And I want to use our personnel wisely.
Sure.
Where it makes sense. We are already paying them, and I think to just say that right off the bat that that's not the best use for our police department, when that falls directly in with codes, blight, and crime is ridiculous. I'm finished.
Hey, I'm going to stick with it. I don't think it's against you. But we will, there again, but I do not disagree with you about the site, the issue of trash. That's, it's just been something we've dealt with forever and never been able to seem to get anything.
Maybe we need to implement a program like what I'm talking about, so we can address it, and not just keep pushing it off. Anyway, Carolyn, welcome.
We are adjourned.